...to make for the good of all of those who have placed their trust in this leadership. Amen. Make the final decision of the public meeting that is going down to I said, no, so this meeting is provided. Also, according to the 2023 by law, rules and regulations of the Board of Town officials in the town of Burlington, time shall be set aside only for the donor receipt of public comment. Public comments will be received if we actually attend the items, items to force consideration or resolution to be adopted. An additional opportunity for public comment goes prior later in the meeting. Public comment shall be limited to four minutes each season. On these time may not be transferred to another season. Persons may see once per public comment period. I direct the desk to park to enter into the minutes of this meeting, this public announcement, and the events in the minutes of this meeting. Commissioner Apple?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connell is asked it. Deputy Director Paulian?
Yeah.
Commissioner Singh?
Here.
Director Hossip?
Here.
Thank you. We will now move on to the approved minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of public and conference meetings of May twenty fourth, twenty twenty three?
So moved.
So.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Today, we're doing recognitions of National Trails Day. Our first recognition of the night is the National Trails Day. Even though it was a little over a week ago, we wanted to acknowledge the importance of open trails. We work at the Department of Resource Conservation, does creating and maintaining our incredible trail system. Would the staff from the Resource Conservation Department please come forward? And I will now turn things over to Commissioner Apple.
Thank you, Director.
You get signed. That's right. I have a few remarks to read here. So, good evening, everyone. As the Director mentioned, June third was National Trails Day. It was created by the American Hiking Society to be a day when residents of all ages come together to help clean up public lands and trails. I spent that morning at Amoco Island Park with Senator Troy Singleton and about twenty volunteers. Together, we filled close to ten large garbage bags with litter and debris from the trails and the beach. It was a great way to honor the day, and I want to thank the Senator and all who came out to help us that day. June is also the Great Outdoors Month, which is a time to celebrate responsible, healthy outdoor recreation on local, state, and federal land and waters. Here in Burlington County, we're fortunate to have so many outdoor spaces our residents can enjoy. Burlington County Park System alone has more than one thousand acres of developed parkland and more than fifty miles of interconnected trails. Our board has prioritized maintaining these spaces and making sure they are accessible for all residents, including those with mobility challenges. We're also committed to growing our trails network across the county. Doing so improves mobility and enhances our own county parks and also the municipal parks and recreation areas we link it to. Some of our biggest success stories have involved our county trails. In the past two years, we constructed another five point five mile section of the Delaware River Heritage Trail between Florence and Borntown City. And we opened the first length of the Rancocas Greenway Trail between Amoco Island in Delran and Pennington Park in Delanco. We also completed the Arnie's Mount Trail in Springfield. This year, oh, there's one. This year, we're beginning preliminary design work on a trail expansion from Arnie's Mount to the county fairgrounds. And a new trail linking Willingboro Lakes Park with the iconic Mill Creek Park. We're also searching for funding to study additional regional trails through our central and southern towns like Maple Shade, Echam, Mount Laurel, Metford, and Tabernacle, with the goal of eventually connecting to Camden County's network. These represent important investments in our residents' health, our environment, and our economy. Parks and trails help attract businesses and raise property values. More than one hundred forty-three thousand New Jersey jobs and eighteen billion dollars, billion dollars in consumer spending are attached to outdoor recreation in New Jersey. We all benefit from investing in our county's parks and outdoor spaces, which is why we continue to look for new opportunities to enhance ours and encourage residents to take advantage of them. With us tonight are Mary Pat Robbie, the Director of County Department of Resource Conservation and Management Specialist Matt Johnson, who coordinates our open space acquisition and parks and trails development. Our parks and trails have become incredible assets for our county, and we want to thank Mary Pat and Matt and your entire team in Resource Conservation for all they've done to create and maintain and enhance them. Working together, we have preserved and enhanced the landscape of boroughs and counties and improved the lives of our residents. Thank you again for all you have done and all you continue to do for us. Did you want to say anything about it?
No, we're just.
All of that. All of that more.
We're just very grateful to the Commissioners for all of their support for allowing us to do a job that we don't.
So you were.
This is my.
I think the only thing I'd add is, um, we've had the opportunity to do a lot of park and trail openings over the last several years. And at these events, people come up to you and just unsolicited give you hugs, um, which is pretty special for, like, for people that work in government.
And all of the.
But it really brings home kind of the point that these spaces, these parks and trails are improving people's lives. And, and I think that's just something that keeps encouraging us to do more and more, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, America, and we appreciate it. We will now move on to our NJAC scholarships. Each year, we have the privilege to recognize and honor outstanding students from Burlington County who have selected to receive, who have been selected to receive scholarships from New Jersey Association of County, County Foundation. We have NJAC Executive Director John Donato with us tonight and representatives from AT&amp;T New Jersey and South Jersey Industries, who sponsored the New Jersey Association Foundation Scholarships. Would you all please come forward? And I'd also like to invite Erin Titi to come forward. You have to stand here while we get all this discussion about. So Erin is from Delanco and is the recipient of the SHI International Preparation Scholarship. This award recognizes a student pursuing a degree in technology or cybersecurity. He's graduating from BCIT West Hampton in the top ten percent of his class and is a member of the National Honor Society and the school's baseball team and soccer teams. Erin plans to study computer science at our Rowan College at Burlington County this fall. Congratulations. Next, I would like to invite Christian Zaman. Hi, Christian. Welcome.
Thank you.
Christian attends BCIT in Metford. He's from Burlington City and is the recipient of the AT&amp;T Scholarship. This award is for students pursuing a certificate or degree in cybersecurity, computer information systems, data analytics, data management, computer science, or a related field. He's a member of the National Honor Society and plans to, and plans to study cybersecurity at RCBC. Congratulations. And our last student that will have come forward, could we have Faber come up, please? Welcome back, Faber. It's great to see you again. The Burlington County Women's Council just honored Faber last month, so we're happy to see her again. Faber is a Willing Girl resident and the recipient of the NJAC Student University, I'm sorry, South Jersey Industry Scholarship for Outstanding Student Achievers. Faber's graduating from BCIT West Hampton, where she is the top student and president of the school's National Honor Society and Student Council. She also serves as a student representative on the Combined BCIT Special Services Board of Education. She plans to continue her education at King University, where she will be studying economics. Congratulations. We are very proud of everyone, and we're excited that you're here tonight. So, on behalf of the Burlington County Commissioners, we say congratulations. And now, would you like to say a few words?
I would love to, and thank you for having me here today. I appreciate it a great deal. It's great to be with my favorite county administrator and county councilor. I'm bored too. I appreciate it a great deal. I just want to first thank AT&amp;T and South Jersey Industries. Because of their generosity, the NJAC Foundation was able to give away over ninety thousand dollars. Percent of the monies to county vocational technical school graduates who are continuing their education right here in the great Garden State. So, congratulate, thank you again to AT&amp;T, South Jersey Industries, and SHI, who unfortunately couldn't make it today. I want to congratulate all the parents and guardians, and particularly, I want to congratulate all the students. Best of luck to you.
Absolutely. Congratulations. We will now move on to public comments on agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak on any other topics will have a chance to go to the meeting room. When it is your turn to speak, please make your full name and address for the record. As a reminder, each speaker is limited to four minutes and may only speak once per public comment portion.
There you go.
Do we have anyone for comments on agenda items? So we have two people that signed up. The first is our friend Louis Lopez. Hello, Louis.
Good evening. First, I miss you all as a family. Uh, second is, I want to thank the Burlington County Health Department from my mother's side. Thank you. Appreciate for your service. Uh, I have four agenda item question I would like to ask. The very first one, I E eleven, twenty-two, and the very last one is that very last agenda item, thirty, thirty-seven. Can you clarify a little bit more?
On I eleven, this is just us approving the revenue for the county budget. This is going towards the Health Department, but it's part of our county budget, so we're just approving that.
Okay.
And then your next one was I twenty-two?
Yes.
So we're, I don't know what a dark trace enterprise review system is, but. It's cybersecurity. So this is cybersecurity, so we're purchasing this system. And it's going, it's going to be for the Department of Information Technology. This is just to make sure our networks are protected. And then the last one, I thirty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
Authorization to purchase COVID-nineteen action review for Burlington County emergency preparedness? We're just, we're just purchasing this review action for Burlington County. This is so we can be prepared for emergencies.
And one last thing. At the last pre-hold, did anybody ask about the first agenda item?
I, I don't recall at the last Commissioner meeting.
Yeah.
I don't recall.
Okay. I got some other questions that I'll, I'll report. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, next we have Gary Morberian.
Hi, everybody. Gary Graham, one thirty-eight East Stadium, West Hampton.
How are you?
Hi. Um, agenda items, I thirteen. I guess my question is, is there any way we can do better? It just doesn't seem like one day's enough for traumatized kids that are trying to grapple with the after effects of the opioid addiction in their family. Is that the best we can do, just one day?
Well, this is just one aspect of all the services that are available in the county, though. So, the camp is just one aspect of supporting folks who have opioid addiction in their families. So.
Okay.
It's, I mean, this particular camp is slotted, so maybe we'll give funds and we can use more at another time. But based off of the amount of funds that we have, this is what we can offer.
Okay.
But this is not just the only help that we offer.
Okay. And if kids need help, is there a way for them to?
Absolutely. We have recovery center. They can contact our Human Services Department, but we have recovery centers throughout. Absolutely, we have help.
I just hate them to miss out on a camp.
Absolutely. We understand.
Okay, so thank you. Um, the next one was the I fourteen.
Okay, and your question?
It just doesn't seem like that's enough funding to purchase the, the kits. Is that going to be enough to get kids into every high school? Seems like there's a lot of high schools, and that's only eleven thousand dollars. And these kids are kind of pricey. I'm just wondering, is that going to be adequate? That's just what I'm asking. Cause then I think.
Well, I think it's ba, I think schools have to want to participate if I'm, am I, am I interpreting that correctly? So we don't know that every school in Burlington County will participate. So, we are basing it off of a percentage. Maybe we get more, then we'll pull a dress again.
Okay. Um, and if they don't, then I guess if they need the, an axon, they just call the local municipal EMS system to respond?
And most schools have their own emergency processes, right? If I'm Commissioner Singh, I would think.
These schools have their own budgeting and funds. This is addition to what they already provide themselves.
Right.
This is just, you know, share some funds.
Right.
Okay, so it sounds like it's going to be at least adequate.
Absolutely. In our opinion, it is. And then, of course, I guess we'll, we'll get more direction. But from my experience at, from a former school board, school boards are also preparing for these type of emergencies.
You just hear a lot about it, you know, and they do save lives, so I'd rather have more than, you know. I sixteen, um, I guess my question is if you can give any kind of a thumbnail on what exactly is in this RFP? Essentially, what are you looking for, for the provider to, uh, once they successfully, I suppose, bid for the RFP and they're awarded? What are they going to be doing, you know?
Well, the RFP, they would have to meet the, the requirements of the RFP, so when you ask me what we're looking for, I don't have the RFP in front of me.
Okay.
To talk, to talk to that.
Just curious, um.
But it's, it's also, it's still, we're living in services, so we would, we would partner with whomever gets the RFP to provide support again for the addiction.
Yeah.
Do you, you understand what I mean? So whatever that support looks like, counseling, you know, getting help, recovery, getting off of drug. I'm not an expert in counseling, so I can't tell you what all those pieces look like.
Yeah. No, I'm just looking to see if it's the, the proper, appropriate community response to this crisis.
Well, we don't.
The best that you can do. That's why I was asking.
I think that sounds like you're diminishing what we do. No, we, our subject matter experts, which are the department heads, they're the ones who vet this. So by the time it gets to us, it's been properly vetted, right? So if we're putting out a RFP for this, then we'll make sure everyone meets the requirements with an RFP, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay. I think my time is up.
Yes, thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comments on agenda items? Do we have anyone else for public comments on agenda items? Seeing none, I'm quoting this portion of public comment. We will now move on to resolutions. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution I one through I twenty-seven for unanimous consent. Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director Paulian?
Deputy Director of the Galactic Resolutions, I twenty-eight to I thirty, by unanimous consent.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
The second, by Commissioner Singh. Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Apple?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolutions I thirty-one through I thirty-seven by unanimous consent.
Thank you. Properly moving second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We will now move on to questions from the media. Do we have any questions from the media? Seeing none. We will now move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Each speaker is limited to four minutes and may speak only once. When it is your turn, please state your full name and address for the record. I see we have some folks that signed up, so I'll start with the sign-up sheet. Uh, Mr. Louis Lopez again.
Good evening. This is Louis Lopez from Mahai. First is, I'm glad to be back. I couldn't make the, uh, you know, at the last meeting on my way here. My mom called me back. I was around the corner. She asked to come back to the house and take me to the hospital. That was at six-thirty, two weeks from today. And, uh, I said, so I missed my, no worries about the meeting, you know, I'll always call you guys to see what's going on. That's what, that's why I missed me. Second is, can you clarify for one agenda item for me, I twenty-nine?
We are in the process of, uh, are going to be putting out to bid, um, two projects. Okay, both, um, we're asking for a labor agreement so that the work that's being done for both of those projects incorporate union labor. And we find that the success of the projects, when we don't really have to worry about conflict among labor unions is the most expedient way to, to fulfill the contracts.
And I have two, uh, two comments I'd like to make. First is, I want to thank everybody who made it to Frank O'Harris ceremony and celebration. Appreciate for everyone, especially to you, Tom Furin. You did an amazing job, and, uh, he's not here to congratulate you, so that every person would come. And, uh, you know, the family, it was amazing. That's what I know. And second question is, uh, a question to the Burlington County Health Department. Uh, Chris, the question is, have they received any question, comment, concern about something candy or Skittles? About the certain ingredient that they, they have on a candy now is being banned from three state. Not here, but west coast, California is the first state ever banned.
Nothing's been brought to our attention from what I understand.
I'm not just wanting to know that.
Right. Your question is, have they received any concerns about the Skittles candy, about an agreed, an agreed ingredient in the candy?
Yeah.
So my, what my response to you is, nothing has been brought to our attention. So, from my knowledge, nothing's been reported from our health department regarding the Skittles candy.
Oh, I just, you know, I love about the news and, uh, and they banned California. All, all city, everything got banned in three different states, west coast. And I also, uh, and I appreciate it having us together, and I appreciate the Burlington County, uh, Sheriff's Department for assisting my mom to get her single ID. She's very happy. And, uh, and it's the best city, you know, county, the best county in Burlington County. In New Jersey, Burlington County is the best place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Louis. Um, next we have Gary Morberian.
Gary Graham, one thirty-eight East Stadium, West Hampton. Uh, so first of all, happy Flag Day. And my congratulations to all of the recipients, uh, both in the county for their trail, um, efforts and also to the students. So, well done. Um, it's interesting, Commissioner Apple mentioned something during her remarks about seeking funding for trails. And so at one of our township committee meetings in West Hampton, we had a presentation from this outfit called Morning Strategies. I don't know if you're familiar with them, but I think that they do quite a bit of consulting throughout the county and municipalities. And I want to say, I think they said that they actually have done some services here for the county. If that sounds about right to you. So, um, you know, we're looking at them to see whether or not they might be able to help us with seeking out grants for funding, et cetera. So, uh, perhaps that could assist as well with what you're seeking to do. But the other point I wanted to make about them was that, um, we had a chance to kind of ask them a little bit in context around their presentation. And one thing that I had asked was, if there's a neighboring township that's pursuing a project seeking funding, let's say, let's, for example, call it a bike trail in Burlington Township, and we're a neighbor to Burlington Township, would we know if they're doing that? And if so, wouldn't it make sense in tandem for us to also seek funding, a grant, et cetera, to possibly, you know, have economy of effort there and do whatever is necessary to sort of have a more sort of congruent kind of bike trail, for example? And their answer kind of surprised me, and this is why I'm bringing it up to you, is that they said no. They don't really have like a clearinghouse to kind of see what township in which municipality in the county is doing what. So it doesn't sound like the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, and yet every municipality is entering a contract with these folks to kind of help them with that. So just from your sort of perspective, it may make some sense to develop some best practices to see if counties are going to be hiring these folks. Maybe there could be a little better coordination and communication on that. That's just my suggestion. Uh, the other, if I have time with, the other comment that I had was on May the tenth, uh, the Commission passed a resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two five nine, the CDDG. There were two resolutions. Um, in particular, the one I'm really interested in was the one that was twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two six six, the CDDG co-op agreement. So that was approved and passed on the tenth. And our township, um, on the second of May, had the agreement up for, uh, resolution in the township. So, it was on the second of May, you moved on the tenth. So in other words, it sort of pre, it sort of, it was pre-your resolution. So I guess my question is, is that the right sequence? Should have, should you have passed the resolution first and then sent it back to the townships?
So we're not going to answer as to what the township does as far as their sequence or procedures through their own entity. We're not going to opine as to that.
Okay. My, my other question is, on that actual agreement from the county, uh, if you can answer, is it sort of like a standard agreement for every municipality that enters into what needs co-op agreements? Or is it individual to each municipality?
We have to look at the agreement.
Yeah.
Typically, agreements are catered to each municipality. I don't think we can really play agreement.
The one I'm looking at from my township was ten eight, okay.
Um, next we have Maureen.
Maureen.
Oh, Maureen. My apologies.
Hello, Commissioners. Maureen Taylor Ford, one one seven Branch Street, Von Holly. Um, thank you. Thanks for the trails. I love trails. Uh, I'm coming to you today with, I need some guidance, okay? I've been, um, my husband and I are military transplants here. I'm a disabled Afghanistan war veteran, and we're having problems with our township, Mahali Township. So I'm here to ask for direction on what needs to be done from my standpoint as a citizen moving forward if we're having disagreements with our mayor and our township council, when things are not getting addressed to say. Um, I have been sick for the last ten years from coming back from Afghanistan, and I'm now trying to get back into the community and understand more of what's going on. I have four children that I have brought up in this town, and I love this town. I'm from New York. My husband is from California. We chose to stay in this town because we love Mahali. We love the area. But what I don't love is what I see going on. If everyone is an elected official, these people are elected, you guys are elected, this is a voluntary role to be elected in. This is a voluntary role to be elected in. If you're here to serve the people, you're supposed to serve the people, not make excuses on the lie. In two thousand nineteen, prior to COVID, I purchased my second property in Mount Holly off of Route five thirty-seven, which is a county road. It's a shared road with Mount Holly, which is Branch Street. In two thousand nineteen, I submitted a documentation to, at the time you guys were called freeholders. Okay, I have all these documents here in my phone still. Uh, it came back to me that uh, you, you directed me to Mr. Livingston, who's known with you, and Mr. Mead, who's known, they're also in the county engineers' office. Okay, they directed me to Safe Route Schools. Safe Route Schools only works to eighth grade. Moving forward, prior to Mr. Livingston leaving, uh, he called me, he sent me an email. They were able to erect a sidewalk. Okay, the situation that I have is being that I live on that main road, there are any day multiple number of accidents that are gonna possibly happen. Children are still running across the street onto my property, which I'm even willing to make a sidewalk which connects my property from five thirty-seven to the houses in East Hampton. I am literally the last house in Mount Holly. So the children from East Hampton, they run across five thirty-seven to include my two youngest children also, and the sidewalk is maybe fifty yards away. And it's what I was trying to tell them that you can't put the sidewalk there. I'm telling you, these kids are, and grown folks are literally running across the street at the smallest section of the street. So my concern is, living on that home, I've already seen maybe twenty accidents, okay? That have almost come right through my front window. So I'm just here for suggestions for what can we do, can I do, my husband, you're a citizen of this town that I do love, okay? To push forward and try to figure out how can Mount Holly get a shared agreement with Burlington County, Burlington County, County Town, I mean, Burlington County in order to get um, a life there. Cause from what Mr. Livingston had told me, he was actually the only person in the engineers' department who even decided to help educate me. Because coming from New York City, our former government is totally different than these municipalities. And it's, you know, I'm trying to make the adjustment and learn. That's my issue. If I have enough time, I have two neighbors that I would like to ask their issues about. They're elder. One is dealing with handicap parking. He's concerned that he cannot get a handicap parking space in front of his home because the township is saying he has a driveway. But in the city also, they're saying that, that the handicap parking is regulated by the state of New Jersey. If it is in fact regulated by the state of New Jersey, the township has nothing to do about that. So.
So we'll have you talk to, we'll have you connect with someone from our engineers' office to, to talk to you about your sidewalk, your agreement, and then for your neighbor's issue with the handicap parking, they would have to reach out to their local assemblyman or senator.
Okay.
That's probably the best option.
Okay.
If they're trying to go that route, that, cause we have no firm view over that.
You don't. So higher up, you don't.
Right. So I think, um, I don't know who your assembly, do you, I don't know who the assemblyman is or who the senator is, but Mount Holly.
Is it Earl Conway or?
Is it Senator?
Senator.
Assemblyman, we'll, we'll make you, we'll get you the name for that piece for your neighbor. And then for our piece, I think, we'll make sure that you connect with someone from our engineering department.
Well, thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for coming to our meeting. Um, next we have, I don't wanna mess up the first name, Nessmith, last name Nessmith.
Margaret.
Margaret, thank you.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
It's my first time here, so.
Yeah. So just give us your name and address for the record.
Margaret Nessmith, um, fifteen Oak Chamber Road, Burlington Township. So um, I am a member of the Mayor's Advisory Council for Burlington Township. And for over, I'd say about five years now, we have been asking about the repair of rank caucus roads, particularly off of Sunset. Um, nothing has been done. And I've been told that this is a county road and not a, you know, a local township road. Um, so I saw some repairs done um, further into the East Hampton, West Hamptons area where the warehouses were now constructed. But I guess that's just the repair because they have to go underground to do, you know, wiring, et cetera. Um, however, the area that um, there by the Sunset Road intersection continues to get worse every single year, causing, you know, car damage and stuff like that. Um, so I guess my question is, you know, is there something that's causing the delay in getting that, that area fixed, that road, that stretch of road fixed? Is there something else that the township needs to do that they're not doing? I, I'm just.
I mean, I know they're just scheduled for road repairs, but do you have specific, like, these aren't potholes, you're talking, what exactly? Is it just the tracks and like, what's, what is?
But it's a combination of potholes and, and this, you're, you're going up a road like this.
Gotcha. Okay, so just wear and tear, basically?
I guess, I guess. And every, every winter it gets worse.
Gotcha. Okay. So yeah, there's definitely a, definitely a schedule, but we'll, um, there's a schedule for a repair, our county road repair.
Mm-hmm.
I have no idea what we are in that schedule or how it, how it works. But we will definitely have someone reach out to you to explain it.
Okay.
So how can you, we have someone right here, this, this nice young fellow in his white shirt. He'll take your information and make sure, Charlene, I did not see you. Charlene is from our public information office, so if you could just connect with her, we'll make sure that you get your answer.
All right, thank you. We've, I, I keep, we keep hearing that too, that there's a schedule. But five years is quite a while.
So. Eve, how do we make sure? Well, yeah, we're gonna make sure, this is, this is our county.
I was here in the township.
Okay, great. So you know what I'm talking about?
I, I don't know. But um, I will have the county engineer or someone get back to you. As long as you provide her with your cell phone number or your phone number, your email.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? Do we have anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I am posting this portion of public comment, and now we even want to comment from Commissioners. Commissioner Singh, do you have your comment?
Um, thank you, Director. Um, Happy Father's Day. Uh, as one of the fathers is coming up to all the fathers and one of the fathers and those that are stuck being uh, in father position with your uh, uh, nephews and sisters and so on. Um, uh, thank you and then have a good time in that um, on Sunday. Um, Mr. Marbury, just wanted to echo Doctor Director's comments. I do work in a school district. Uh, so school districts by law have to have um, 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 shots available for a, any of these opioid overdose situations. Um, that's by state law going back, you know, at least half a decade, if not more. Um, but this fund is just to, we receive opioid settlement funds uh, from the state. Um, so as part of the national settlement, state settlement, we receive funds as part of that fund's plan, how we're spending that money. Um, the human services department is going out and finding the needs within our communities and figuring out how we can support expand services, or sometimes like school district you talked about already do provide it. So we're just giving them the kids from our funds that we have from the settlement. So now depending on the school district, it may be additional inventory, or it may be something that they don't have to spend the money on. But it's not like somehow we're giving them only one kit. We're giving one kit per school, which includes uh, three um, of these shots. But the school districts already have it. Having a gizlin extra uh, in order, and now working school districts, we have these easily accessible, so this is what um, those funds are for. And remember, I do live in Burlington Township off of Sunset Road. Um, and uh, I, I, I'm obviously struggling trying to figure exactly where the potholes are, so maybe we can connect afterwards and I can understand exactly where that is and I can talk to the mayor and, and the county or two. I use that road cause I live on Salem Road, right after Sunset.
Yep.
Um, so uh, I gotta figure that out. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Echol?
Thank you, Director. Um, and Happy Flag Day. That was on my list of things to say. Thank you, Mr. Marbury. And Happy Birthday to the US Army. Uh, and I want to extend my gratitude to the Burlington Island managers and friends of the Burlington Island group for inviting us to tour Burlington Island. I think it was that last weekend before, if it all runs together. And I was joined by Commissioner Conley and Commissioner Singh and we had a lovely tour of Burlington Island. And I included a ceremonial planting of a cutting, was it the oldest tree in the state, Commissioner Singh?
Salem oak tree that has very historical significance.
That was a lo- it was a lovely ceremony on a lovely afternoon. Um, and they're looking at ways that they can make uh, the Burlington Island a little bit more accessible to the public under Green, uh, Green Acres, I think, which was nice. Uh, there's a lot going on this weekend. I'm looking forward to go and getting out to as many Juneteenth celebrations as I can. And um, and I'm, as Commissioner Singh said, Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers, father figures, fathers in spirit. I hope you all have a lovely Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. That's me, Director.
Thank you, Director. Um, Happy Father's Day to everybody. Um, let's see, when was it? A week ago, I think, right? We attended a really um, really nice ceremony for the Boy Scouts of America at Deerwood Country Club. Uh, I think it was the first time all five of the Commissioners were able to get together, so that itself was an accomplishment, but they honored um, two um, individuals for scout, I think it's Scout of the Year, right?
Up to the county.
County.
Yeah.
County. Uh, very distinguished uh, individuals who pledged a lot of their uh, life towards the scouting movement, so uh, having gone through the scouting uh, for years and Eagle Scout, it was nice for me to, to witness that. I hadn't seen that for quite some time. So I really appreciate it being invited and attending that. I also want to give a shout out to our county's election board uh, for the primary election. Even though we did have some hiccups here and there, I, I want to commend everybody for the, the work that they did. I think, I think Burlington County did a great job uh, for the primary, and I, I know it's gonna be as good, if not better, uh, during the general election. Um, thanks to all the directors. You know how much I appreciate you being here. And uh, I hope I get to spend another three years. It's been a lot of fun. And I've learned a lot and uh, I hope that I get another three years to come back and work with you, cause we still have the life to get on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, my comments will be quick. So of course, Monday's Juneteenth. Uh, so I hope, we, hope everyone gets an opportunity to celebrate and, and some of the Juneteenth after sets around the county. Um, Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers and to all the mothers in some cases. Um, thank you guys so much for coming to our meetings and I appreciate it. Good seeing you. I'm now looking for a motion to adjourn. So, second.